Oh, I know. I will now call to order the January 25, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick; County Council is Assistant County Council, Sean Lilligrin; Role call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. We will not go past 11:30. I'm hoping to adjourn at 11:25 because we have a very important awards luncheon today where we're honoring longtime volunteer Clackamas County resident Wilda Parks at the North Clackamas County Chamber Luncheon Awards. So we will be recessing then, and I'm sure our business will be done before then. Thank you. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's rules of order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, what's the first item?
First item today, Chair and Commissioners, is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Chair Smith. Commissioners, elected officials, Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Finance, Item 1, Approval of Personal Services Contract with Barry Dunn McNeil &amp; Parker LLC for County-Wide Federal Grant Compliance and Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement Value Not to Exceed $305,000 over 1.5 years. Funding is through coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds were allowed and departmental cost allocations, which may include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Juvenile, Item 1, Approval of Amendment Number 1 to a Contract with Latino Network to Provide Parent Engagement Support and Advocacy Services. Amendment value is $246,515 in 2 years. Contract value is increased to $369,768 over 3 years. Funding is through the Oregon Youth Authority. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, Item 1, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Cascadia Health for Peer-Delivered Supportive Housing Services. Maximum contract value not to exceed $1,259,304.75 over 39 months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Native American Youth and Family Center for Emergency Family Shelter. Contract value not to exceed $1,960,789.81 for 1 year. Funding through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Amendment Number 2, Extending the Duration and Increasing the Rent Amount of a Lease Agreement, North Clackamas School District, Number 12, for Women Infant and Children's Service Space at the Wichita Community Services Building. Amendment value is $10,956.56 for 12 months, ending June 30, 2024. Funding is through local public health authority funds. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, Item 1, Approval of a Cooperative Agreement with the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services for Provision of As-Needed Building Plan Review and Inspection Services. Agreement value not to exceed $50,000 over 5 years. Funding through permitting revenues. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Marion County for the Scotts Mills Road Butte Creek Bridge Replacement Project. Total agreement value is $4.3 million. Funding through Marion County and a grant from the Federal Highway Bridge Program. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved we approve the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary?
Next is the Consent Agenda for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
One item, Approval of Termination of a Disposition and Development Agreement with Sam Allen Motel Properties LLC and One Monarch Center LLC. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second. It has been moved by Director Scholl and seconded by Director Schrader for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Any further questions? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Holy cow, we are up at public communication. Didn't think it was going to go that fast. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of all consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon law statute and county code. Testimony is limited to 3 minutes. Comments shall be courteous and respectful for all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. If anybody in the room wishes to testify, please walk up, fill out a blue card, and place it in the basket. First, Christine Kennedy, please come forward, state your area of residence, and you have 3 minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Christine Kennedy. Can you hear me?
Would you pull the microphone closer, please? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Still not good. I'm a resident of Lake Oswego. I have lived there for 10 years. My professional experience is that as a professional nurse, and I resigned my last position actually about 14 years ago, but I was very involved with emergency preparedness. And I was the Operations Commander in March of 2010 at the Vanderbilt University Emergency Response, the EOC. So I just want to make a couple comments about the response and some of the communications last week. So first of all, I did get a chance to listen to the testimony on the 18th and the report on the emergency response, and it sounds to me like you've got an amazing group of employees and that you really did learn some very important lessons after the 2021 ice storm. I remember the 2021 ice storm because I drove on Highway 43 on my way over to Portland to give COVID shots. And the devastation along Highway 43 was amazing. So I think I probably fit in the category of neighbors to the north of you. That's kind of how I felt in some of the comments. I will share that I have a family who is very prepared for emergencies, and I was able to shelter with them for 4 days in 14-degree weather with no power. It was scary. I grew up in Ohio. I've done a lot of emergency response stuff. It was scary. I just want to share that, okay? Had nothing to do with anything other than the vagaries of the weather and the east winds. And I think you all should feel very fortunate that you were able to get through this event as well as you did. It's not a time to talk about a worldview, which is part of what I heard on the 18th. I know that we all want to be able to take care of ourselves. We want to be able to be ready to respond in an emergency, and your first responders are challenged with, do I go respond to an emergency, or do I stay here and take care of myself? So I really applaud the culture that supported that work. All about equity and justice, and I just hope that you're able to do a really thorough debrief and learn lessons from this event. So best of luck. I think equity is a key issue with this.
Christine, thank you. I had no idea you had the background in emergency preparedness that you have. Maybe you would be interested in volunteering with your expertise in some areas. You know, we don't get it perfect all the time. We have learned from our past mistakes, and with the help of others, including the State of Oregon and National Emergency Response, we were able to respond a little bit better. We can't control the weather. We can't control when the power goes out. We can't control if the power coming back on. By golly, we all wish we could. But I want to thank you for coming forward. I think gratitude is one of the best emotions that we can have, and I am extremely grateful.
May I respond? May I respond?
Yes, may I finish?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and I am grateful that it wasn't as worse as it was. Somebody asked, well, why didn't you declare an emergency? And first of all, it's not up to this board exactly. There is an economic threshold that must be reached with FEMA, and Gary was at $1.9 million. Is that what Daniel said the other night?
I recall, yes.
Yeah, of damaged property to government. Unfortunately, trees falling on people's houses does not qualify. Unfortunately, PGE spending an arm and leg for overtime people to come out and repair power lines does not qualify. If it did, we'd do it in a New York minute. So those are some of the constraints we have. And I do wish some of those trees in, especially where in Lake Oswego, were really bad. I wish that more could have been done faster on that. But, you know, we do what we can. Commissioner Schrader, do you have your light on?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Christine, I live in Lake Oswego, too. I was lucky. I was surprised. We didn't have many, I'm an evergreen neighborhood. We didn't have many, I had some branches down, but nothing serious. And my understanding is this was out in the Highland area, or, I mean, I couldn't get out, quite frankly. There was like, you know, an inch of ice. And I was, but I didn't lose power, so I was one of the lucky ones there. But I was, I couldn't physically get out of the house for about a week while that was going on, because I'm older, and I was afraid I'd fall down the stairwell or something as I even just tried to get out. So, and I did have friends over who didn't have power, who I fed for a couple of days. So, yeah.
There's a good reason why, I mean, I did think about being involved with Clackamas County Disaster Response, but I couldn't get over here ever.
Right.
I mean, I drove up a road today that was like, okay, I'm driving this, and it's not icy. So my community is Lake Oswego.
Yeah.
And I recognize that we're on sort of the tippy-top of the county, and sometimes we're seen as being quite entitled. I think the bottom line is during an emergency, neighbors help neighbors, and that's the key. I was with a family that was very well-prepared. They were without power for 6 days. My 8-year-old daughter could not, or granddaughter could not understand why some people have power and some people don't. And she finally was able to understand it in her own brain by saying, "The power cord to our village is cut." Now, it maybe sounds funny.
No, it's not.
But, you know what? It was one of the scariest things that I've been through, to sit, to be in the living room with 2 of my grandchildren, waking up in the middle of the night to stoke the fire. I'm tough. I've been through a lot of stuff. So I just, you know, this is not whining. Sometimes I think that's the impression, that if people don't have everything lined up, that it's whining, if I, you know, if they make a statement. This is not whining. This is being very honest. Thank you for letting me state my truth.
Very honest. Commissioner West would like to re-
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner West would like to respond if you want to.
Oh, thank you very much.
From one nurse to another, thank you for your service to your community, and especially in the field of emergency response. I very much think that that is an area that we would always want to see more citizens involved in their local community. I want to clarify my comments. They were my comments. My comments were directed at Multnomah County, across the county border to the north. People that were sheltered, that were vulnerable, were kicked out onto the icy streets. Then we kind of find out that they had a detention center where we contracted Clackamas County youth to be taken care of there. They were not, they knew this storm was coming, and they didn't notify us when our youth was stuck in frigid below sub-freezing temperatures, and they didn't notify us so that we could help. And they didn't notify their own commissioners. And so there was a real lack of leadership preparedness to the north. And I think there's a, when you show good local government doing the bare minimum and the basics and the obligations that we have as local government, there is a contrast between ones that functioned appropriate and repaired and others that things happen that you can't foresee, but there are things you should foresee, and the basics should be done. And so I was trying to figure out what was the difference and why we were successful, and we didn't see the same successes in Multnomah County.
Sure. Absolutely.
So that's, I just want to clarify that.
Sure.
But I do think that you are correct, that our staff did a phenomenal job. They are amazing people, and we, I loved their response and preparedness in implementing that plan. So I just wanted to clarify where we were speaking to.
I'm very clear on what you said. Thank you very much, Commissioner West. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Up next, John Mullen. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have 3 minutes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of County Commissioners. For the record, John Mullen. I live in Oregon City. I'd like to talk about diversity, equity, inclusion this morning, and it's not about rehashing the comments that I made back in June and August, but it's about the way that is going forward from here. I happened to read the Oregonian article on January 18th that talked about the new plan and the message that went out to county employees. I contacted your administrator, Gary Schmidt, and he very promptly provided me with that information. And I read it with great interest, because I know this has been a difficult issue for the Board. I was present for the debate. So my questions are really about transparency and accountability going forward about how the new plan will work. So I just have a few comments I'd like to make in that regard. The, there are a number of employee of resource groups that are listed in the memo. One of the things I'm wondering about, and I'm just going to ask questions. I don't expect answers today, is how those groups will be engaged in taking a look at how well the new system is working. What other ways will there be to engage employees to understand and be able to speak up about the goal that Gary clearly listed in the memo about Clackamas County being a welcoming place for employees? There's also the issue about recruitment and making sure that we're recruiting and people feel comfortable working in Clackamas County. So it's a complex issue to deal with, but I definitely think it's one that bears some attention. The other thing that I would suggest is that there might be a review at some certain point in time, maybe during the budget process. I think initially, there will be a lot of spade work to do, like what are the job descriptions going to look like for the people that have been reassigned or new people coming in? How are they going to work together? You know, when you organize things in government, sometimes it's a matter of putting things together. Sometimes it's a matter of pulling things apart. How is it going to work in a more diffused kind of manner as opposed to having an office? The other thing that I would just put out there, this was part of the discussion when you were debating the issue, is to what extent will Clackamas County be excluded from applying for grants with this new structure or not be able to apply? So it's one of the things that will be interesting to take a look at over time. In other words, is this structure going to put Clackamas County in a worse position about receiving funds that are necessary to provide the government functions?
Would you like a few answers before you continue?
Pardon me?
Would you like a few answers before you continue?
Oh, well, that's fine with me, yes.
Yeah, we have time today.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see anybody out there beating this down to have more people. Gary, you want to answer, take a shot at some of those questions?
Were you finished with your comments, or would you like the answers?
Well, you go ahead. I have a couple of quick other things to say.
Thank you. Thank you, John, and I appreciate your communication with me earlier before this meeting. So Employee Resource Groups, these are what they say, groups for employees to get together on county work time to talk about issues or come together on things that they care about. In this case, we have 3 current ones that are related to equity and inclusion. Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council, Queers and Allies, and the Black Employee Resource Group. So how they are going to continue to advise me and leaders is that I am meeting with them, the chairs of those groups, quarterly, which I've always been doing. That has not changed. And they are still going to help review policies, recruitment policies. They still have a say in contributing to me, in particular, and the Board, if necessary, on anything related to those issues as far as county policies. They can give an advisory role. So that still continues, does not change. Review of the structure, of course, I do that with all departments and offices. And I do want to say, the Board did not make this decision. I made this decision as the county administrator. The county code authorizes me to make structural changes to the organization. So I want to say, it's me, not the Board, who made this final decision. There is currently a job description for one of the roles. The second role is still being created, but those will be posted online on our classification page for HR. And those 2 will work directly with me, in addition to the department directors they've been assigned to. So while the structure looks different, the work continues and it still has an engagement with me, which is very important. And finally, will this exclude the county for applying for grants? Absolutely not. The key is we have to meet Title II and Title VI of federal law, which we've always done. And in fact, in my opinion, this new structure enhances that. So as long as we are complying with Title II and Title VI, we are not excluded from applying for grants. So the structure really does not matter, frankly, on how we apply for grants, but those 2 title adherences do.
John, go ahead. I think you have more to say.
Yes, just if I might on that point. When I was Director in Clackamas County, Clackamas County Social Services, at that time, we had about 65 funding sources. They don't always speak with one voice. Compliance issues can be different based on the funding source. So I think this is something that's going to be an evolving discussion. And you may find yourself in a difficult position about explaining how Clackamas County is invested in diversity, equity, inclusion with this new structure. But that being said, I feel somewhat reassured by both the memo and what Gary has had to say. And I really want to underscore, as he said, that it was his decision to make. And yet, I'm glad it appeared in the Oregonian, because I wouldn't have known about it otherwise. And so my purpose in being here today is really to be part of the public saying, "We're watching, and we're interested in this issue and how things will move going forward." And so with that, I'll just say, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity.
There's a couple Commissioners you might want to just stay here.
Okay.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, John, I just attended the Diversity Equity Advisory Council the other night, and I am committed to continue with working with them. I put in a call to Tori, and I'm planning to have some coffee with him. And we're waiting for the Coalition of Communities of Color. Am I right, Gary? They actually have done a whole report that gives us insight to the whole county. And I was hopeful, with the blessings of my colleagues here, that I could work with them, take a look at that document, and see where we would move things forward from here. I am a little bit of a rebel, so if it's a structural thing, I just kind of, sorry, Gary, I just kind of make things happen anyway. I try to do it that way, okay? So I was surprised that I had 2 external colleagues write op-eds, and I wish they had called me first. I didn't get the courtesy of a phone call from either one of them. And I thought that was certainly not making me feel like I was trusted, okay, to continue these kinds of things. Any way I can do to help it happen. The woman who is now, what, she's staffing diversity equity, well, she's in public and government relations where she's going to have opportunities, right, Gary, to continue the communication, and he's staffing the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Group. And then the compliance person is in HR, and-
Martha?
Yeah.
Can I comment on that?
County Council.
Yeah, am I right? I mean, just go ahead and comment and just tell me what I'm-
The one existing position, the remaining person will go to Public and Government Affairs, focus on external-
Right.
-communications, supporting all people in Clackamas County, that they have access to their local government. And then the second position will be on compliance in the County Council's office.
Okay. So that's where that is, the County Council's office, because compliance is, and in my understanding with compliance, it had originally existed in Human Resources as where the DEI function was. And it was Ann Leininger, who was a Commissioner, I know too much history, guys, I guess, who wanted to move it up to the administrative level. So that was that way for a number of years, and now you've made the structural change. But I really, I think it's, it's pretty complex. I just really, I need to assure people and my colleagues here that I want to continue working on these issues. I think they're important. But I will keep everybody informed to the best of my ability, because I never do anything unless I let other folks know. And the meeting, this last meeting they had, the clerk was there, and she gave a presentation about, you know, election process. I wanted to give an update, but I ran out of time. I had to have a hard stop at 7:30. And one of the things I wanted to mention was the report that we're expecting to come in that I hope can give us a roadmap. So colleagues, I hope you're not upset with me. This is what I'm quietly doing, because I know it can be a touchy subject, but I'm really trying to do this in a way that keeps things moving, rather than being so polarized that we can't even talk to each other. I will tell you something else I've been doing. I am joining a group called Better Angels. I learned about them at the National Association of Counties, and it is a group of Republicans and Democrats that are getting together and have conversations about how to reduce the polarization. In our committee, I've signed up to be a part of their group. It's a national group, and they are concerned that our discourse has just devolved into so many polarized things with terms that just trigger people from both sides, in my humble estimation. And I can tell you from my perspective, I'm not interested in the jargon anymore. I don't care about that. I just want to see things move forward justly, equitably, for everybody. And we need to stop, we need to stop this polarization. And again, I would like my colleagues from here on out, if they are going to write something, I wish I would have a courtesy of at least a phone call. I did call our clerk. She did call me back. I called her back, and I haven't heard anything since. But I'm doing the best I can to make sure our county moves forwards, and I'm really trying to do it respectfully for the people I am elected to serve with.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I don't think anybody at this dice is upset with you about anything, so I'm going to take that off the table.
Well, I feel like I have to let you know what I'm doing.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all.
Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, just a few comments. And I'm going to just share a little bit of history to kind of give it some context. I remember when Commissioner Leiniger was here, for example, Ann Leiniger. So I recall that. What I learned then, and what I learned from talking- What I learned then, and what I learned from talking to our staff who were in that office as the transition was being made to put it up in administration, was the long history we've had and some of the advocacy groups that have been built in here. And learned that we've been really doing this for a very long time. Gary, how many dates back to the 2000s, early 2000s?
2003.
2003. So I was like, you know, impressed that we had been at it for so long. And, you know, attended some events along the way, of course. And several years ago, '86 or so, I'm just guessing, about six years ago, the metro government decided they were going to develop their DI program and like, and making, you know, a big splash about it. And I remember being in the room when they were giving us the presentation, and I remember, I go, well, you know, we've been at this a long time, you know, and we're happy to help. But I hope you'll look at our model, because we're doing it really well, you know? And I think we all took some pride in the fact that we were dealing with this very well. So, you know, of course, they may, they have got their program underway. But part of the reason they got their program under the way, which is back to the grant issue, and I learned this again, got that basically, that foundation of understanding even greater when I went to Washington, D.C. last year. And we went to the U.S. Department of Transportation, U.S. DOT. And we met a lady, I met a lady in there who is the head of not DEI, but of just the Equity Department, and how they were embedding their application process and how that was a bar, right, that was going to be raised. So I, all to say that we're not always successful in getting a grant. And some of these grants are highly competitive. And our staff do a good job on some of the, especially in health, housing, human services, on getting a lot of grants. But some of these larger ones, like it's transportation or whatnot, or other infrastructure, doesn't have to be infrastructure, but they're highly competitive, because the whole country's bidding for them, right? And it's not about whether you, sometimes where you can just punch the box and say, check the box, we did this, sometimes it's about how well you do it, right? And so I think the optics and the content sometimes is, could possibly make or break it. We don't know why we, how or why we win a contract or how we lose a contract. But on the transportation side, we lose more than we win. And I don't know the answers to that. Certainly, I can say that the politics on the East Coast is far more powerful. We're a small state, there's a lot of rationale, but I don't know the answer. All I know, it's highly competitive. So it's not, again, it's not about just punching the box or checking the box, it's about how well you do and how robust it is. And this is something that is an increasing demand from coast to coast for robust programs that meet that. So that was the basis of my comments and the learned experience that I had that, you know, my comments were mentioned in there before, but about the grants. So yeah, that's important, but all the other things are important. I think the optics and the people feeling as though they belong to this agency, I think those optics are understood. So it's, sometimes it is how the direction we're going, or a change of direction that either give them the confidence it's going one way or another. While some people, I think it's a good thing, some people don't. But at the end of the day, I think having a strong workforce that feels good about what we're doing, and as an employer, I know that's hard to do. It's hard to get good people, it's hard to retain good people. But I think it has to be a welcoming place at the end of the day. Enough said there. Chair, I yield.
Can I just make a correction? It's actually Braver Angels, Oregon, and working together in Oregon and southwest Washington to depolarize our country. And these events, Braver Angels, Oregon, I'm just going to read it, colleagues, please bear with me, is working on our local communities by holding workshops, debates, and public presentations designed to bridge the polarizing political divide we experience in our country. These events allow conservatives and liberals to get past the destructive stereotypes so we can have civil conversations about real issues that lead to productive problem solving. They've been here since 2018. They do red-blue workshops, skills workshops, town halls, so on and so forth. So I decided that, for me, that's the way to move forward right now, because everybody's got a narrative, everybody has a story, everybody has a viewpoint, everybody is molded by how they grew up and what their past is and their adult experiences. And we have to be open to that. And that's why I actually love working with all my colleagues.
Can you send me that link?
Yeah, it's right here.
That would be interesting.
Because it's okay if I don't, if we're not on the same page with things, but I'm open to it.
You know, John, you talked about, oh, I'm sorry, Martha.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm done.
I've always said that employees are our biggest resource and our most valued asset in Clackamas County, and that continues on. Are some people in life unhappy? Yes. I'm not unhappy. I hope I don't make people unhappy. I'm a happy person. So we just want to spread that around, and thank you. Any other comments?
Just very quickly, I just want to just acknowledge what Commissioner Schrader said and put it in the context that this is awkward and difficult to work through these issues. It should be. Basically, the whole idea of having a society that works for everybody is, it's a difficult issue to move forward. And I just want to say, too, that I very much appreciate the fact that you're working with the Coalition of Communities of Color. I've known the director and the assistant director for many years, and I have total confidence in them as an organization. And then finally, I just want to say to all of you as our elected officials, and also to Gary representing all of the employees in Clackamas County, I'm very much supportive of the workforce doing good things and being a welcoming place. And I look forward to the county commissioners holding the whole transparency and accountability functions of this work in a high place, where you go back and review it from time to time to make sure that you are on the right track.
Thank you, John, for coming forward today.
You bet, thank you.
You bet. Gary, that study of the community as a coalition of color, that is a many-year study, which was fairly expensive. When will that be completed?
It was a two-year study, and the two years are up now. So in the next two or three months will be the final draft of the survey.
I imagine it would take a while to compile the data and figure out what it all is. Okay, good. We look forward to that. I see no one else in the room who would like to testify in person. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now end the, and close the public communication portion of this meeting. Gary, what's next?
Next is county administrator update, and I like to use this time to recognize our county employees for their phenomenal work. And today is another example of that. The employee is Tanya Sharp, who works in our finance department, and she helped save someone's life.
Wow.
Here's how she did it. She was at a work conference, a finance work conference, and one of her work colleagues at the conference, not a county employee, another employee had a stroke. And Tanya stayed there and held her hand and talked with the person until the ambulance arrived. And the woman is fine, and she's just fine. So the person who this happened to wrote to Tanya, and I want to share it with you. I wanted to thank you, Tanya. Actually, he wrote to our manager. I want to thank one of your employees, Tanya Sharp. I had a mini-stroke at a conference that we both attended in December, and she was so kind and stayed with me until the ambulance came. I just wanted to let you know and thank her for her kindness and help in saving my life. So just a little example of what our county employees do. Beyond the normal course of work, we really care about people and helping people, and Tanya is one such example. So that is my update for today.
Thank you very much. We are now at Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Wanted to just kind of continue the conversation a little bit about governance, things that are happening in the region, and some, have had some people reach out to me about this and kind of ask a question, so I can, I'm going to help qualify, you know, really answering the question, why is this, you know, why are you talking about this? And so I want to just kind of restate and clarify that back when the commission was three county commissioners and it went to five, there were, a committee was formed, and the committee had, you know, recommended a five commissioners and so forth. And they, during that discussion, prior to the recommendation, they studied things like, should you be a charter county? Should you have certain elected positions appointed versus elected, like the clerk or the sheriff and things like that, like other counties do? A number of things. Should you be elected by zone, by district? So when I, you know, and I watched that, I really didn't participate as an assigned member of the committee, but I did watch and listen to that as that was happening. And so went on the ballot, the voters approved it. But during that process, and Martha, you may remember, I don't know, there was a, I won't say a promise, but there was an obligation that the committee would, after a few years, couple of years, would take a look at it and say, how's it doing? Would any adjustments? Because the, some of the unanswered questions was chartering. Unanswered question, should it be by district and zone? So when I came on shortly after, it was the second year, I did meet with not the committee, but members of the committee, the former chair of the committee, God rest his soul, Ernie Platt, for those who remember him, well-respected. And we had a couple chats about it. So what we did on interim basis, and hit interim basis, not, when we talked about reconvening the group to fulfill that obligation to the voters, to talk about it, was maybe it hadn't gone long enough. I'll give it a couple more years, but we can at least look at the districting. So we had our GIS department drop some population-based maps of the county, and I think we experimented with, for a while, rotating as zones and pretending we lived in a zone, and then going out. And we did this rotation thing for about a year or so. And it kind of gave us a sense and got some feedback. And I got, I don't necessarily have a conclusion about that or a personal gain about that. But I do believe that many, too, many years have passed, because, you know, again, that was 2011, 2012, and the advice then given by a couple of members of the committee was, give it a couple more years, which made it right around 2014-ish, 15-ish. I brought that up to the attention of the chairs along the way, the elected chairs along the way, and have not really gotten any commitment to get the committee back assigned. And the other question is, well, why now? And I want to talk about the why now. Well, why now is like, hey, it's being, you know, look at what the city of Portland's doing, look at what is happening in part of our region when it comes to governance. And by the way, it is a little bit late. But also, keeping in mind that because it's a political, not a political topic, because it is a relatively high-level topic, we're going to go through an election year this year, Portland did a lot of groundwork to get where they are. I have reservations about their model, but it just seems not only right, but also is overdue. And nothing that this, reforming this committee or, you know, updating this committee to tackle this work has no influence on this election for this year. It would take a year, two, or three to do anything. So no one should feel threatened on the board that this is any kind of, anything. I just feel it's an obligation to the voters to examine all the things that we're taught. And maybe there's some new, some new things that come up if we put this committee together. So that's the answer to the why, and that's the answer to the why now, and also that it has no impact on the current election or anyone on this board. So Chair, I'll conclude my thoughts for today, knowing that we have an obligation at 11:30, and continue the conversation in the days, or the weeks ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
I think I've said enough today. But thank you, guys, for everything. I'm looking forward to going to the event with Wilda. I went to Good Morning Oregon City the other day, and I have to say this, too, I met one of the young women that's running against me, and actually, she's a very lovely, she's very sweet. We really, you know, it's going to be an interesting thing, because I think we'll end up hugging each other at events or something, right? But in any case, I thought that was pleasant. It's nice when you have people like that willing to step up, so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On staying strong against anarchy, I'm troubled to learn that recently, Councilor Renee Gonzalez's car was lit a fire in front of his house in Portland. Also, anarchists have tried to light the home of Mayor Ted Wheeler on fire, and also Commissioner Dan Ryan. And I just want to say that none of us should allow any kind of anarchy to squelch our opinion or cause us to be threatened or intimidated. And I encourage Mayor Wheeler, Councilor Gonzalez, and Councilor Ryan to stay strong and do not tolerate this kind of anarchy. On energy, here just recently, we had another ice storm. We had power out. I think Oregon was the state with the highest number of homes without electrical energy, at about 217,000 for some three or four days. Think about what would have happened during that time if most of our homes and businesses did not have natural gas to heat with. It would have been really, really bad and really expensive. Natural gas remains our most economical source of heat, and also for energy in much of our industry. And it was the state legislature here a few years ago who passed some legislation that required our utilities to begin to phase out some fossil fuels and increase the use of green energy, which is expensive. And this has attributed to your bill from PGE that you'll receive this month, which will be 18% higher per unit used of electricity than last month. Again, this is another issue. I encourage people to get involved, contact your state rep, and let them know how you feel. This week, we've talked a lot about Measure 110. We've seen a lot of interest in the media. We're beginning to see an interest for changing or repealing Measure 110 across the political spectrum. Everyone is now realizing that change must be made. Recently, the Oregon Society of Addiction Medicine cited that in a national study, 97.5% of those who struggle with addiction don't think they need treatment. And 2.5% thought they needed treatment, but made no effort to get it, even after it was offered them. And only one-half of 1% in that study, people who were addicted, thought they needed treatment and made an effort to get it. And even a smaller percent actually made it through the required treatment. So lawmakers in Oregon here next month will meet for this short session. It's going to be tough, it's going to be compact and full of all sorts of issues. I certainly don't envy their job, but this Measure 110 is going to come up. And the outcome of this short session will be affected by your input and the number of people who actually contact your state rep and express your opinion on Measure 110. Now, there's some interest in changing Measure 110. I personally advocate repealing it and starting fresh. But there is some interest in making drug possession and use a Class C misdemeanor, which is the lowest crime classification, and it would come with 30 days in jail or a $1,250 fine, or both. I personally believe that the use of killer drugs should be a Class A misdemeanor, which I believe will more quickly change our situation in Oregon by providing up to one year in jail and $6,250 fine for people convicted of possession and use of... jail and $6,250 fine for people convicted of possession and use of killer drugs. And again, this is another opportunity for people in the state of Oregon, people in the Clackamas County, to get involved and take action and exercise your civic responsibility and make your voice heard. And I will leave you with a quote from somebody that I really respect out of American history. "The influence over government must be shared amongst all people. If every individual, which composes their mass participation, are the ultimate authority, the government will be safe." And that's a quote from Thomas Jefferson from his notes on the state of Virginia. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal and Commissioners. This week was rather busy, as most weeks are. I attended the Oregon City Businesses.
Chair.
I'm sorry, it's Mr. West. I, I got ahead of myself on my notes. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going, I want to start by updating my colleagues that I believe, Commissioner Schrader, you're joining me, we'll be doing a listening session with Congresswoman Chavez DeRima on housing homelessness and addiction with our partners, Father's Heart and Love One, here in Oregon City. So we have some talking points. We're going to talk about some key successes in Clackamas County and begin to be a leader in that space. As I've said before, the vast majority of counties, even many bipartisan legislators have been very, can't deny the success that we've had with the crisis that we're facing. I want to thank Representative Rob Noss, who actually chairs the Health and Human Services Committee, Senate Majority Leader Lieber, Leader Helfridge in the minority, and, and just their, the, the work that is trying to be done in Salem. I don't know if we're going to totally get to where we need to do to arise to the occasion to address the crisis that we face, but I think there's really serious conversations. I'm glad that Clackamas County is at that table and respected at that table, because by all objective measures, we are exceeding expectations and being innovative and creative in a, in amidst a crisis. And so I've been really proud of the work we're doing. Commissioner Shoal, I want to expand a little bit on your Class C versus Class A. It is my, not only professional opinion, but moral opinion, that there's no effort to criminalize anybody for being, suffering from the disease of addiction. And, but we do need the piece of accountability that allows us to intervene over an extended period of time to get somebody sober and healed and whole. The Class C misdemeanor is dead on arrival with not just Clackamas County, the Association of Counties, the sheriffs across the state, the DAs across the state, the League of Oregon Cities, and bipartisan support in the legislatures having a hard time not providing the local tools necessary to intervene to help people recover. And we have to continue to push primarily the biggest thing within reform has to be that Class A piece, because it allows us to have the extended time to be on just detoxing somebody off of the substance, but the recovery process that is much longer beyond detox. And that, that is, we can't get a handle on this until we, we have the correct and proper partnership and tools with our justice system. So we'll talk about that just ahead. Like, we have had a decline in the number of people experiencing homelessness and addiction in Clackamas County year over year. One of the primary ways we look at that, and we look at the data, is through the point in time count. Since 2019, we've had significant declines. People who need housing in Clackamas County, emergency housing, get that. People who need wraparound services get it. We create an entire system called CHAW that allows us to know who is homeless in our communities. It's almost like a charting system that allows us to continue to do aggressive outreach, to build the relationships, to help spur them into some type of care or recovery. And we do really robust data and outreach work. We don't just give tents or sandwiches, but we're really looking to go beyond that, to help fulfill the gaps of where they're at, maybe it's their trauma or other things. But that has resulted in significant decreases in a way that in other places haven't been able to see yet. But we have specific systems and worldviews that inform those actions, and it's working, and people are noticing. The county also is right now about to invest in that 23-hour stabilization center that also, the other half of it would provide respite. We are always talking about the giant safety net system and the care continuum, which we're building, and systems that work concurrently, one another, hand in hand, to meet the needs of the individual, multiple access points to recovery. And, and some of the things that we're doing and talking and doing just haven't been done very much throughout the state or throughout the West Coast. So I'm very proud of the discussion we're going to be having later with the Congresswoman, with our service providers, as we look to expand those resources. So I want to make you aware that that's happening. And I want to thank my colleagues, because we've had a robust discussion on Measure 110 all week. We spent hours on this, in good faith, working with each other and indulging different ideas and, and kind of, in a healthy way, kind of sparring things out together. And I, I feel like we're going to get to somewhere good in the next week or so with our value statement and with our preamble and our policy ideas that I think will not only just signal to the legislature and other local leaders, but the community and everybody at large about the specifics that are necessary to get Oregon and Clackamas County recovered. And I just want to thank you guys for giving me that, that bandwidth to do that with you. It's not easy work, and it's sometimes emotional, and maybe sometimes I feel too close to this topic because it's so personal to me. But I really appreciate you guys helping lead the county. And with that, Chair, I will pass the floor, or the gavel, I know you have the gavel, whatever it means. I will, I will shut up. I will be quiet. So yeah, that's all I got.
Sorry. I didn't mean to, like, exclude you. I was thinking about what I needed to say.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah. As I said before, we attended the, some of us attended the Oregon City Business Association luncheon this week, where the City of Oregon City talked about their priorities for the next year. It was well-attended. I liked listening to City Administrator Toni Conkle, who's very good. He fielded a lot of hard questions. Like I said, it was well-attended. If you ever have a chance to do that again, attend. Next month, this organization is hosting the City of West Lynn, and we will listen to John Williams, their city manager, on what their priorities are. So it's very important, which leads me to my monthly meeting with the mayors of the cities. We call it the Mayors and Chair Meeting. And this month, it was well-attended. I think only one mayor didn't come. He might have been working, and so I'm trying to put it at an hour where our volunteer mayors aren't interrupted from their work schedule. At issue was mainly the ice storm and the recovery of such. And I've encouraged all the mayors of all of the cities, that Clackamas County has money, and I have asked these mayors, I say, we have money. Tell us what you want to use it for. The money is yours. And I have encouraged them over the last year, and again, this week. It's very important that you have the ability to set up a warming center, a warming shelter. And it's just not for homeless people. You can use it how you wish. And the objection is, we're setting up these shelters and only homeless people go there. Well, it's for your citizens, who are without power for a very long time, who need to go and charge their cell phones, so they can communicate with people outside the area, just let them know, to get blankets, to get water, to get food. And it's really incumbent upon the cities that they start setting these up. There's been a lot of pushback. Unfortunately, the warming shelters have become so politicized in some of our cities that they won't even look. And how this started was Mayor Denise McGriff said, how many, I want to see a show of hands, of how many mayors set up warming shelters besides Oregon City? And oh, by the way, we had two. One other mayor raised his hand. City of Sandy did. And she says, you know, I'm getting tired of you mayors not doing this, not stepping up and having all your people come to Oregon City that we're supposed to take care of. It is incumbent on the leadership of every single city to at least take care of their people during a time of an emergency. And the money is there. The money is there. We can show them how to do it. And so it's just really troubling to me that a warming shelter to take care of people in a time of an emergency or disaster has become politicized. You talked about that in your efforts. We're trying. That was that. We also had a meeting yesterday, the Lamont Falls Locks Authority. We're moving along at a really good clip. We have a, an executive director, Reed Wagner, who's doing very well, and we reached a milestone last night. We took a vote on acquiring the deed to the Lamont Falls channel. That is a big, big, big deal. There are many owners. There's about 1,000 different easements that run back and forth since, over the last 15 decades, this channel has been in operation. And so we're moving forth. We're in, always in negotiations with United States Army Corps of Engineers, Portland General Electric, the City of West Lynn, the paper mill, and there's another private owner down there too. So this has been a really Herculean effort. We are funded, we're able to bring on an accountant to help us with the proper reporting, Treasury report. We brought, we're seeking an auditor. We have an attorney, and a lot of these folks are lending their services pro bono until we get started. But it's just really coming together, and it's been a long time coming. I remember it wasn't that long ago, it was about a year ago, that legislature authorized this statewide commission. We're called an authority, but none of us really feel that authoritative on here, just so you know. And to go out and do this work, and it's just been, we're like a nonprofit. We are a hybrid, like safe corporation and OHSU, so sometimes answering to the letter of the law in this legislation is difficult. We will be making an amendment to several pieces of the legislation at the next longer session to help out. Legislators have really good ideas on how they think things could go, but this legislation is so hugely complicated. It took us six months just to get a bank account set up, and because we had to follow the letter of the legislation. So you don't know what you don't know until you do it. This Lamont Falls opening of the locks is a first of its kind, not only in Oregon, but probably west of the Mississippi. So we're creating a model and a business that has not been done before. And it's kind of exciting, but it's just very laborious going forward. Want to talk about Measure 110. We're doing the best we can here at Clackamas County, in treating and trying to keep drugs off the street, but for the most part, our hands are tied. But I will say this, we didn't get into this situation overnight. Addiction seems to come very fast to those people who are afflicted, because that's how dangerous these drugs are. And it will take us time to build the structure and the places to treat these people, to get them on the road to recovery and prosperity. So help us, help these people, and we are dedicated to doing everything we can on this issue. Commissioners, thank you for your time today. Thank you for the people who came forth to testify. Seeing no further business, before this commission, we are adjourned.